Next item, please.
Item 26 is, was referred without recommendation. It is a resolution calling for a sustained ceasefire in Gaza, humanitarian aid, release of hostages, and condemning anti-Semitic, anti-Palestinian, and Islamophobic rhetoric and attacks.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. President Peskin.
Thank you, Chair Walton.
Mr. President, sorry. I'm sorry. I just wanted to ask, out of order, if we could have a moment of silence. We did that in the Rules Committee yesterday. I think it's a cause for, in this moment, given the magnitude of what's happening in the world, if we could start off this, before we get into this item, if we could have a moment of silence for all the folks that are suffering in that part of the world, all the loss of life, all the folks that are being held hostage and others, if we could, if we could start with that, I would really appreciate it. And remind people that are in the audience to set the tone, to be respectful, and to be thinking about everyone that is suffering at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Safai. We will take that moment of silence now. Thank you, everyone. Supervisor, President Peskin.
Thank you, Supervisor Walton. As you can hear, I don't have COVID, but I'm not healthy.
On my microphone.
Truth. So, this afternoon, colleagues, I rise saddened that the situation in Gaza and Israel continues unabated after our Board of Supervisors recess that lasted for the last 23 days. This resolution was introduced by Supervisor Preston prior, in early December, prior to our winter recess. In large part because I am sick and I am coughing, I didn't sleep last night, because every time I lie down, I start coughing. And I thought about this quite a bit, and I have the luxury of not being on the Rules Committee, so, but was here for public comment. And fundamentally, I had two thoughts, and I say this as the son of a mother who was born in Tel Aviv in 1940 and was eight years old when Israel became a nation-state whose sister was involved in the resistance to the British occupation and has hundreds of family members in Israel. And I say this as the son of a Holocaust scholar, my father, who taught at San Francisco State for some 40 years, and who was a specialist on the psychological impacts of the Holocaust on children of survivors of the Holocaust. And I say this as the brother of a professor at Arizona State University, my brother Victor, who has written extensively and is a nationally acknowledged expert on international justice and war crimes tribunals. And I had two thoughts last night, in the middle of the night, at 3:00 in the morning. One is, I mean, this situation, even though it's on the other side of the world, as you just heard from me, affects so many of us very personally. It affects many of my neighbors and community members who have lost relatives and friends in Gaza. It affects Supervisor Ronan, whose father was raised in Israel, and so many of us. But I was saddened by the fact that here in San Francisco, we have not succeeded, arguably we have failed, to use this as an opportunity to bring our people on both sides of this divide together. And I lamented that. I don't know that there's any way to successfully do that, given how deep the divisions and the hurt and the horror and the pain are. The other thing I thought about is about the rule of law and about the importance of international justice and about how people need to be held accountable. Some of that was discussed yesterday in the Rules Committee and really felt that this resolution would benefit from some notion of international justice. This morning, I came to work and met with several of you and heard different things, and as President, wanted to see if we could bring at least the 11 of us together in a single statement. And to that end, I am offering amendments that turn this into a one-page resolution. Nowhereas is, we went down the road of reciprocity. Hamas did this, Israel did that. History that goes back either 75 years or goes back several thousand years, let's dispense with all of that. How about we have a resolution that just resolves, that resolves that we call for a sustained ceasefire, provision of lifesaving humanitarian aid in Gaza, and the release of all hostages? How about we resolve that we urge the Biden Administration and the United States Congress to do the same, to call for a ceasefire, humanitarian aid, and the release of all hostages? How about we resolve that we condemn anti-Semitic, anti-Palestinian, Islamophobic, xenophobic rhetoric and attacks? How about we resolve that this board condemns Hamas's attack on civilians that resulted in so much horror and 1,200 deaths on October 7th? And how about we resolve that we condemn the Netanyahu government's attacks resulting in the deaths, deaths of tens of thousands of Palestinian civilians in Gaza? And how about we resolve that the board believes that a just and lasting peace between the Palestinian and Israeli peoples requires new leadership on both sides with a willingness and commitment to negotiate in good faith? And why don't we finally resolve that the San Francisco Board of Supervisors urges the international community to work with the Palestinian and Israeli peoples to find a just and lasting peace, to conduct a full investigation of the conduct of all parties in this conflict, and hold all parties and individuals who have overseen or engaged in war crimes and international human rights violations, including but not limited to gender-based violence and killing of children, accountable? I think that says it all. I don't think we have to whereas, I think we need to resolve. I want to thank all of the, my colleagues who had input into this, and I would like to strike the rest of the language and insert the language that is here. I rise to make that amendment and hope that a ceasefire in Gaza happens in the days ahead.
Second, if I'm able, Madam Clerk, am I able to second that motion?
Yeah.
Second.
Supervisor Preston.
Thank you, President Peskin, for your comments. I'm really going to keep it short because I spoke extensively, both when I introduced this item and also in committee. So, I really wanted to simply thank all the people who have come forward. I've never seen anything like it, and I think when I've talked to colleagues, I think we've all agreed, whether we've been on the board two years, four years, or eight years, that we've never seen this level of engagement and passion, and so many people coming forward to share their views on this. And it's, I think it's not just about people coming in and speaking, it is about, people are sharing such intensely personal and emotional experience. And regardless of one's views regarding the political situation and conflict, I think what we saw was just so much raw emotion from people, sharing with their elected officials and in public, you know, at a microphone, their trauma, their fears, their anxieties. And that's, I just want to acknowledge that because it's a very, very difficult thing to do, and for people to wait five hours lined up outside this building and through our halls to come in to talk for one minute, five, I mean, just waiting five hours to come talk to us for one minute. I just want to give a shout out to all the folks, some folks are here today, others who have been here. We've gotten tens of thousands of emails, and just so appreciate all of that commitment to trying to work for peace and save human lives. I also want to thank President Peskin for his efforts, as he described, to try to see what common ground would look like here, which is no easy. We have, I think, set out to do that from the start with this resolution, and it is not easy terrain to navigate. I also want to recognize and thank Supervisor Safai for, I think, really setting an important tone for our discussions in committee, and both in terms of starting out with the moment of silence, as well as making sure that regardless of people's views, that there was a respectful and safe space for people to speak here in these chambers. I think it's extremely important, and I appreciate very much your work on that. Last but not least, in the thank yous, I really want to acknowledge and thank my legislative aide, Melissa Hernandez, who has worked really tirelessly and brilliantly on this resolution. So, thank you, Melissa, and I really hope that with President Peskin's amendments here, that this will earn support, that we can all come together on this and send, as President Peskin so articulately stated, just a strong and unified message in support of a ceasefire, in support of humanitarian aid, and in support of the release of all hostages, and in unequivocal condemnation of hate, antisemitism, Islamophobia, and anti-Palestinian hate. So, thank you very much, President Peskin, for your work to build what I hope is consensus around our resolution.
Supervisor Ronan.
Thank you, colleagues, and I, you know, I want to start out with some thank yous to, first and foremost, to you, Supervisor Preston, for leading this charge that has not been an easy charge to lead, and for doing it with so much thoughtfulness, integrity, kindness, and patience to everyone around you. It's been, it's been a marvel for me to watch. I would have had a much harder time. I was really impressed with you. And the same goes for Melissa Hernandez, who I just think the world of. And, you know, there are legislative aides that stand out in these halls because of the complex work that they do, but also the bravery with which they stand up and take positions. And Melissa, you have stood out very brightly in this building, and I want to thank you so much. I want to thank everyone who is here today, who has been here, who has come back, who has written letters, and like Supervisor Preston said, has told their deeply personal stories. This is also deeply personal to me, and so, learning about your histories and your families has been really profound and has made a big impact on me that I will never forget. And so, I just, I want to thank you all so, so much. And then I really want to give thanks to President Peskin. You did some work today that was extraordinary, and you have a horrible cold and are sick, and you fought through it to get us to a place where I believe we're going to pass a really meaningful resolution today. And I prepared a few remarks, just because it's impossible for me not to, because this means so much to me. And like President Peskin, I've been thinking about it nonstop since October 7th particularly. And I'm currently reading a book to my 11-year-old daughter by Lois Lowry called Number of Stars. I don't know if any of you have read it. I read it as a tween, and we read it every night before she goes to bed. And it's a novel about a 10-year-old Danish girl, Anne Marie Johansson, who risked her life to help her best friend. Ellen Rosen escaped the Nazis who occupied Denmark in 1940. Anne Marie and her family helped Ellen and her family escape to safety in Sweden. Thousands and thousands of similarly brave and righteous Danes did the same things for other Jews in Denmark, and similarly, a beautiful French family hid my own great aunt and my cousin in their countryside home throughout World War II, and they saved their lives. And so, what Lowry's book teaches young kids about human survival and sacrifice is profound, but most importantly, this book is about bravery. It's about bravery of standing up when something is deeply, deeply wrong. And I by no means want to compare what we are doing here today with this resolution to the bravery of all the resistance fighters who saved Jewish lives during World War II. But I do, however, want to recognize and commend those members of this Board of Supervisors for your bravery in calling for a ceasefire and for taking action on this issue. Because this action that we're going to take today, it's going to play a role in saving lives in a real way. And despite many people claiming that we should have no business at the local level talking about these issues or taking a stand, I believe we're going to start something here today that's going to take off across cities all over the United States. And if enough of us speak out, President Biden will have to listen, and there is no doubt in my mind that without the weapons, money, and backing of the United States, the far-right government in Israel will not be able to continue its ethnic cleansing campaign against the Palestinian people. Baby, baby. Sadly, the United States is a major player in this war and can force Israel to act differently if our president wanted to. Our actions today take a stand on this issue, and it will help push our government to change its actions. We will be able to look at our grandchildren and tell them what we did during this difficult time, and we're going to be able to do so with pride, that we stood up even when it was hard, even when we were threatened with political repercussions, which we all have I just have to say that today is one of those days where it feels like San Francisco's still here. We're still San Francisco. We are still one of the few cities in the country that will take the lead and then start something bigger that will stop violence and injustice against all innocent people and innocent children. And that is what makes the city special, it what makes me feel proud to be a San Franciscan, and it makes me feel incredibly proud to sit as a representative of this Board of Supervisors. So, thank you, thank you again to each and every one of you. Colleagues, thank you to each and every one of you that will vote in favor of this. We cannot allow thousands of children to be killed every single day in this ongoing war. Thank you.
Supervisor Mandelmann.
Thank you, President Peskin. I want to thank you for trying to do what I think is an impossible task, which is to find consensus on a topic where people's fundamental basics, starting assumptions, I think, are so far, very far apart. I also want to thank Supervisor Dorsey for trying in a different way to try to find a consensus on this board. I don't think that there is a resolution that can pass today that can get 11 votes. And as I look at this resolution, there are many parts of it that I strongly support, and I know that if I try to change it, to make it a measure that I can support, it will lose the support of many of the people who very much want to see this resolution passed. So, I will be voting no, and I will be wishing for...
No, 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 you guys, just let us do our jobs and chill out. Supervisor Mandelmann.
That's all I got. I'll be voting no and hoping for peace for the Palestinians and the Israelis.
Thank you. Supervisor Walton.
Thank you, President Peskin. And first, I just want to start off by sending my sincerest condolences to anyone who has lost family and loved ones in the region. My thoughts and my prayers are with all of you. I want to just briefly state that I signed on to a petition asking President Biden to call for a ceasefire in the middle of November. And this is really about wanting all of the deaths to stop. We can't ignore tragedy in other areas across the world while we sit comfortably in our homes, while we sit comfortably in this chamber. And I truly believe that asking to end hatred and all violence in the region is very important. And so, I just want to, again, reiterate some of the thank yous of my colleagues. I want to thank the majority of the Board of Supervisors for really working together on this critical issue, to come up with something that says we don't want to see any more killing, and at the same time, is representative of San Francisco values. I also want to thank Supervisor Preston for really being willing to work with everyone, for taking feedback, being thoughtful about what to do with that feedback, and really working to institute that feedback into something that would get us towards consensus. But at the end of the day, I 100% know that it is truly the right thing to do, to ask for an end to violence in the region, and so I will be 100% in support of this resolution.
Supervisor Melgar.
Thank you, President Peskin. I will support the elegant compromise that you have put forward, which is the things that we can agree on. That being said, I want to point out that we do disagree on the whereas's and on the premise of putting forward this resolution. My office has received thousands of emails on this resolution, as well as hundreds of phone messages, and I myself have had lots of conversations with friends and family, including in my own house. You know, hundreds of people have showed up today and in days before that, and the testimony has been extremely compelling, both moving and difficult to hear. I have heard the pain and anguish of my constituents, who are Palestinian, Israeli, Arab, Jewish, Muslim, Christian, who have all lost loved ones in this war, and who live with daily fear here as a result of the animus in the public discourse. I've also heard from female constituents in my district, who are in deep pain over the gender dynamics in this war. I'm not a stranger to this conflict. I myself grew up in war. I do have family in Israel. It invokes a profound sense of despair, a desire to see justice and security for all, and a deep yearning for a regional commitment to safeguard civilians. I want an end to all this violence. But we are local government in San Francisco. We don't have the power to control actions of the Israeli Defense Forces, or Hamas, or the US government. The city of San Francisco does not send money to Israel. We can and must acknowledge the close ties between our community and Palestinians and Israelis and those who profoundly suffer in the Middle East. We must speak up for civilians who are suffering horrific violence and dislocation, and we can call for people of goodwill to stand up against continued violence, continued harm to civilians, and to appeal for a revival of a goal of a regional, multi-ethnic, multinational, multi-denominational peace. That can be the way forward. I have to acknowledge that what happened on October 7th was an outrage. It was orchestrated, long-planned attack, deliberate murder of civilians, women, children, hostage-taking, rape of women, it's still not over. Most of the violence fell upon young people, idealistic people, who are yearning to be part of this solution. These acts were long-planned and perpetrated by the power that's still in power, by the party that's still in power in Hamas, Hamas that's still in power in Gaza. At the same time, the Netanyahu government's response, although prompted by an outrageous act of terrorism, has itself been the cause of terrible suffering and injustice. Israel has a right to pursue those responsible for the October 7th attack. It must do so in a manner that is protective of innocent people, civilians, innocent women, and children. Rules of justice and war say that even a just counterattack must consider innocent lives on the other side of the line and must be proportionate. As a supervisor for District 7, I represent an area that is home to numerous institutions that are important to both the Palestinian and the Jewish communities of San Francisco. Both communities understand that because of their lived experience that a world with no pathway to peace is terrible and brutal. This resolution, I think, elicited a lot of conversation, a lot of difficult conversation, and, you know, I'm grateful that my colleagues, especially Supervisor Preston and Supervisor Dorsey, put in so much work and effort, and ultimately, I'm grateful to President Peskin for coming up with this solution. Finally, I must say that even as we engage with urgent problems such as this, San Francisco is still facing many problems, and we need our relationships and our unity to deal with pain and suffering on our own streets. And while I yearn, like all of you, for peace and healing in the Middle East, in a concrete path towards a stable, long-term, and a cease to the violence, we must also respect, empathize, and show solidarity within members of our own community in order to come together and solve our own acute problems, our housing crisis, homelessness, epidemic of drug addiction that is killing people on our streets every day. As a city, we must be able to come together and support our own path to healing. Thank you, President.
Thank you, Supervisor Melgar. Supervisor Dorsey.
Thank you, President Peskin. When this resolution was assigned to the Rules Committee that I chair, my initial preference was to oppose the resolution as written. My Plan A was to author my own statement and explain that I would, in fact, support a ceasefire in Gaza under certain conditions. After speaking with some of our colleagues over the holidays, I was asked to open the hood on the language and to seek possible amendments that could get us to something that, I don't think there was ever a scenario that would get us to an 11-0, but that might get majority support. I appreciate, you know, wherever people were, I appreciate the work that they did, and I, you know, yesterday at Rules, and I want to reiterate this, I appreciate Supervisor Preston and Supervisor Ronan for starting in a place that I think was less divisive than many others. However, I wasn't there in support of it. I did work in good conscience on what could get me to something that would be there, even knowing that it might lose some others. I want to share, as I did yesterday, what informed my perspective on the process. For me, there are weighty considerations, but one of them that was particularly haunting... it, even if those grievances are right and just and legitimate, I believe it elevates the urgency of being strong and explicit and clear in our condemnation of the terrorist act itself. To do otherwise, in my view, would send a dangerous and unthinkable message that terrorism works. This is not a hypothetical concern. Ghazi Hamad, the Hamas spokesperson, who is probably well-known to many of us as being the person who went on Lebanese TV to promise that October 7th attacks would happen again and again, said also in a video last month, quote, "The Hamas movement is watching the growing calls by several Western governments to end the aggression on Gaza," referring to resolutions like these. And he added, "We welcome these developments and consider them in the right direction toward isolation of the fascist Israeli government." Now, in my view, the quantitative comparison of both sides of this conflict in the original resolution, in terms of the staggering loss of life and the unprecedented humanitarian displacement, are absolutely appropriate and necessary, and I supported that language. And in fact, I'd updated it, and to be big, right now, the entire population of Gaza has been displaced. That is a humanitarian disaster, and we should condemn it. However, I think it also elevated the need to be qualitative also. That is why I quoted from a report that the New York Times published on the front page after a two-month investigation, which said that the October 7th attack...
No, 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 no.
Described systematic and unprecedented in its cruelty, and that it showed a pattern of rape, mutilation, and extreme brutality against women. Hold on, this is...
If you guys keep it up, I'm going to recess the meeting, and there won't be a vote. So just chill out and let everybody speak, and then we're going to vote.
It also established that the, and I'm quoting from the New York Times, that the attacks against women were not isolated events, but part of a broader-based pattern of gender-based violence. What haunts me more than anything about this process, and I'm going to be honest about this, what haunts me as much as anything I have encountered in more than 20 years of working in this building, is hearing the orchestrated denialism about what happened on October 7th. That is not worthy of the city of St. Francis, and it is not worthy of this Board of Supervisors. I acknowledge that there is enormous pain on both sides of this issue, but I am troubled that the pain of some people is being denied. I can't in good conscience support this resolution. But all that being said, I know that this has been a painful process for many of the people here, whether you disagree or agree with me. I know it has been painful for many of our staffs. I know some of us are losing friendships. This is something that is painful and has put me at odds with people I care about and people I love. But at the end of the day, I have to look myself in the mirror and know that I'm doing the job that I said I would do. So I appreciate everybody's work in this. I think it was in good faith. I don't hold it against anybody, but I can't in good conscience support a resolution that I believe is silence about something that it needs to be explicit about. Thank you.
Supervisor Safi, did I see your name on the... Supervisor Stephanie?
Thank you, President Peskin, and thank you for attempting to bring us all together. I think you said in your opening remarks that we've failed to bring both sides together here in San Francisco, and based on what I'm hearing and the responses I'm hearing back to some of my colleagues, I can't agree with you more on that. This conflict has weighed heavily on my... I want to say one thing, too. Every single person on this board is an incredibly human being who does not want harm to come to anyone, and I know that to be true of all my colleagues. And though some of my colleagues, like Supervisor Mandelman expressed himself, Supervisor Dorsey expressed his, Supervisor Melgar expressed her opinions, are all incredible human beings who do not want harm to come to anyone. I know that to be true. This conflict has weighed heavy on my heart since October 7th, and I've been beyond saddened to see the extreme stress it has brought to so many people I know and love. I've always said that my job here on this board, and you've heard me say it too many times probably, is to bring peace to situations. I've said it several times. I've invoked the St. Francis prayer. It guides me to try to be a channel of peace. Unfortunately, I just feel there's no way today, with this resolution amended or unamended, to not leave someone hurting, or feeling misunderstood, or unseen by whatever vote is taken, or by whatever words are said, as evident in this room right now. And for that, I truly am extremely sorrowful. There's not an aspect of the situation that doesn't horrify me on every level, from Hamas' actions to the, what's happening in discriminate bombing. There's so much about this situation that horrifies me, and I don't believe the resolution can strike the right notes and the right words to serve as an instrument for peace. I just don't. And I also think, you know, Supervisor Preston mentioned how many people came out, and I think it's incredible to see what this has stirred in people. I know that many people in the Jewish community who didn't come out because of the trauma, and they haven't participated publicly because of the vitriol, and I don't think that can be ignored either. Since Hamas' attack on Israel, anti-Semitic attacks have increased by an astronomical 350%, alongside a staggering rise in anti-Arab and Islamophobic rhetoric. I don't believe this resolution will end the violence abroad, but what I do know, and what I believe, and what I'm witnessing right now, is that it has fanned the flames of hatred here at home. What I also want to say, I will be a voice for women today. I will, I will not... What happened on October 7th unleashed a flurry of hatred and an unfathomable number of deaths, not just in Israel and Gaza, but even here at home, when a six-year-old boy, Muslim boy, was killed in a stabbing attack, and three Palestinian-American students were shot, acts fueled by Islamophobic hate that are absolutely unacceptable. I truly believe these people would be alive and unharmed today had Hamas not broken the ceasefire on October 7th. I don't think I'll ever understand why some people think it's not okay to voice this truth. And if that wasn't enough, there have been horrifying reports of Hamas' weaponization of sexual violence against women, which should make any sentient being sick. There is nothing in this world that can justify such acts. We have heard the most horrific testimonies from both survivors and forensic specialists detailing how women and children were raped and how they were sexually violated in a story by the New York Times. Yesterday in committee, Supervisor Dorsey mentioned these attacks on women, and members of the public shouted him down and called him a liar, which is really beyond frightening to me, and which is obviously happening at this moment in time to me right now. Hundreds of journalists watched uncensored footage of the Hamas massacre, and I saw, as many of you did, a woman being dragged into a car by Hamas, who had blood between her legs soaking through her pants. I am not going to stay silent on these issues, and these horrors cannot be allowed to fade. I will stand up for women and girls every time, no matter what threats may come my way. You cannot call for a ceasefire without calling for the surrender removal of Hamas and the return of all the hostages. I desperately want the violence in Gaza to stop. I want all babies and women and children in both Gaza and Israel to grow up safe, to love, and to be loved. The empathy and anxiety I feel for all those suffering is overwhelming, even those that, even those that don't like what I'm saying. I have such empathy for what you're going through, and I want to believe that a ceasefire is possible. But I don't know how you have a ceasefire with a terrorist organization who has recently said that would commit October 7th over and over again if it could. They don't adhere to the rules of war based on what I have seen and read, and they are still holding babies, seniors, and women hostage. All those hostages must be released now. I want the Israeli hostages to be free and for every Palestinian civilian to be protected. I want peace for both Palestinians and Israelis. I want Palestinian and Israeli children to be safe and to live a full life, but I won't stay silent about the threat I believe Hamas poses to the possibility of peace anywhere. And because of that, I cannot vote for a resolution that won't, at a minimum, call for the removal of Hamas.
Supervisor Chan.
Thank you, President Peskin. I rise to first express my thanks to you and to your leadership for today, for bringing us together with this amendment before us today that is really focused on action than anything else. I have said it time and time again, I do not believe that the resolution is and will be perfect, but that is clear and evident. It will never be perfect. The dynamics and the issues before us are complex, both in a historical context and what is ahead of us in our future. And so with all that, I would say today, I'm focusing on, as you're elected, as the San Francisco's elected District 1 Supervisor, that I say that I am committed to make sure that San Francisco remain a sanctuary for all people, that we're here, that we're safe, we can speak our mind, no matter what our perspectives are, and that we will respect each other around the city, in this chamber, and in this hall, and that I'm committed to keep all our constituents and communities not just feel safe, but are safe in our city. Thank you.
Supervisor Safi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your attempt to bring unity to this chamber and maybe to this city. I want to thank everyone that has come out over the last two weeks and even when this all happened. I know that this is particularly emotional for everybody. And, and a lot of people said when initially this happened, why would the Board of Supervisors be involved in this conversation in a place in the world thousands of miles away? But it doesn't take long to realize very quickly that if you listen even for a moment, you know, one of the things that we heard yesterday in public comment, and it's haunting, 70 members of one family have been killed. Someone stood up and said that. Forty members of one family have been killed. And also, we heard someone stand up and say their immediate family member was taken hostage, and they feared for the return, and they were released, and they have other family members that are still being held hostage. This is impacting San Franciscans directly. This is one of the most gut-wrenching issues. This is the most gut-wrenching issue that I have dealt with on the Board of Supervisors. I have never received more calls, more emails, more text messages, more DMs, more people stopping me on the street, people grabbing me wherever I am to tell me how they feel about this moment. I don't think anything has captured our city the way this has captured the city. And part of the reason why I think initially there was resistance from some people, and this is something that I had not known, we have synagogues in this city where it was spray-painted "Kill the Jews." That is horrifying in San Francisco. It's horrifying to hear someone that's wearing a hijab say, "I was threatened for my life" in the city of St. Francis. So what we're attempting to do today, I think, is try to draw a compromise. I know people are going to walk away, some people are going to walk away not happy because the language wasn't exactly the way they wanted it, or things were left out, but I can tell you, as the only person on this board that was born in that part of the world, and my life began with gunshots ringing outside every single night, I had my own immediate family members killed by religious fanatics, and I did not see my father the last 15 years of his life because he was not allowed to leave the country that I was born in. The government would not let him leave. The Islamic Republic would not let him leave. I did not see my father for the last 15 years of his life. This is deeply, deeply personal to me, and I have thought about nothing else more every single day since October 7th. And so I know this resolution, some people think it's not going to do anything, it will allow some people in our communities to feel heard and seen for the very first time, because they feel as though they're not seen in our city. And I hope, I hope this does not raise additional fear and anxiety in the community as well, and I know that there are some people that feel that way. So I, I think this is the best we can do. I think we've put a lot of effort and energy into this collectively. I've done everything I could to listen to as many people as I can possibly, but it will have impact. It will set a tone, and it will send a message around the world. And for that reason, I will be supporting this today.
Madam Clerk, on the amendments, a roll call, please.
On the amendment as proposed by President Peskin, Supervisor Melgar. Melgar, aye. Supervisor Peskin.
Aye.
Peskin, aye. Supervisor Preston. Preston, aye. Supervisor Ronan. Ronan, aye. Supervisor Safi.
Aye.
Safi, aye. Supervisor Stephanie. Stephanie, no. Supervisor Walton.
Aye.
Walton, aye. Supervisor Chan. Chan, aye. Supervisor Dorsey. Dorsey, no. Supervisor Incardio. Incardio, aye. Supervisor Mandelman.
No.
Mandelman, no. There are eight ayes and three nos.
The resolution is adopted as amended. Next item. All right, recess, recess.
Recession.